The Republic for which to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
All right. The next item on the agenda, but before I do this, I just forgot to turn on my microphone. So I'd like to remind everyone, please turn on your microphones when you talk. And I was reminded that we have to talk into our microphones, lean into them. There we go, I'm getting thumbs up, so I'm doing it right. So you turn on your microphone with this little button that says "push" and turn it off when you're done. All right. Establish agenda order is our next item. That is, so that everyone can weigh in on this agenda if you have anything to add, or you'd like to change the order of this agenda in any way, or you have any thoughts about where public participation should fall in this agenda, or any other thoughts on this.
Approve the minutes from the last meeting, because I don't see that on the agenda.
We are. We can do that right now. Will somebody move to approve the minutes? Any discussion, any amendments to the minutes?
Madam Chairman, I have one, and I feel odd making a correction because I wasn't here for the meeting.
Please do.
But we don't- He asked Mrs. Moser if there, and the sentence continues, I believe that should be Mr. Moser.
Okay. Yes, I see. Is there any- Oh, thank you, okay. All right, got it? Any other corrections?
You want to reroom? I'd like to make a correction to the minutes, even though I wasn't present, that Mrs. Moser should be characterized as Mr. Moser.
Thank you. Any other corrections to the June 6th minutes? All right, is there a motion to accept the amended minutes?
Motion to accept the amended minutes.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Next is public participation. I'd like to remind the public that we, last meeting, set a three-minute time limit on public comments. At this time, please come up and say your name, and-
Good evening, I'm Teresa Sutherland, and I wanted to comment on two matters for the Commission. First, I wanted you to give some consideration, because I didn't hear it at the last meeting, on how you're going to vote in August. And I bring this up because, as I served as the county auditor for more than two decades and watched the county council replace one county executive and four county council members, they did that in public session. Prior to that, it had been a secret ballot, which I think in this day and age doesn't go over very well. But even if you do it in public session, you need to consider what you're going to do if one candidate doesn't get eight votes on the first round. Because the last time they filled a council position, it took 104 votes to fill the position. So you're going to have to have a process for what happens to get to round two, or three, or four, or 104. Let's hope it doesn't go that far. So I wanted to offer that up for your consideration. And I also wanted to encourage you to deliberate publicly and not in closed session. I know you sought an opinion from the Attorney General, I'm glad you've done that. I don't know what the Attorney General will say, but to me, this appointment is not a personnel matter, because whomever you appoint is not your employee. You don't have any personnel. So I don't see this as a personnel matter. I believe that you are a public body created by state law to make an appointment to a public body, and I would encourage you to do that and deliberate in public. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is why we're here, which is to vote to approve the new bylaws which have been brought into compliance with the new bill. That is recently passed. Does anyone have any objections to the bylaws? Mr. Moser said there's been no public comments on the bylaws, so there's no corrections or comments from the public. Does anyone on the Commission have any corrections or thoughts or comments?
Madam Chairman-
Commissioner Jones?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Very minor. On the front page. Four lines from the bottom. Board of Education, the word "education" in that three-word phrase is spelled wrong.
Thank you.
And there's another one. On page two. I think there's a word missing. If you read the last paragraph. Starting from the second line from the bottom, "county public schools," and not more than "may." I think there should be a "one" in there.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne, on page three. The one member appointed by the West County Chamber, it's now the Central Maryland Chamber.
Yes, yes. That one, "may," I believe that the law says West County, whatever the bylaws say, says what the law says. Is that correct? Okay. That's a tricky thing, because I know you're right, but-
Yeah, it says, so Jeanette Ortiz for the legislative and policy council for the board. On the current law, says the West Anorondal County Chamber of Commerce, perhaps you could put in parentheses, put the new name in parentheses, just so that it's compliant with the law and someone would know-
It's fine.
-to reference it.
Yeah.
So that might be an option.
Yes, since they no longer exist.
Thank you. And who is the appropriate person? Bob, was Bob you are the appropriate person to be telling these changes to? All right, thank you very much. All right, any other changes, corrections? Yes.
Page five, Phil says chairperson should be president, because we had decided that last meeting, as well as vice-chairperson, is now vice-president. Remember, we voted on that last meeting to change that.
So is that another, is there language in the law that is in conflict with those titles? I'm sorry. Five. I don't think that I just want to be rightful. It could specify it in the law. I just want to do what it says.
But it looks like it was updated on the website, it says president, vice-president, president, chairman. Like, all the chairmans have been scratched.
But if the law that creates us says chairman, then we have to stick with chairman.
I don't see any reference to that. But I could just be missing it right here in front of me. But if it's something that's in the law, we would leave it. If it's not, then we can change it.
Thank you.
So I'll definitely make note of that as well.
Thank you.
So I'm not seeing anything.
When we change that last meeting, 11 to 0.
Yes. Any other changes or discussion? To the bylaws? Is there a motion to accept the bylaws with those changes that have been mentioned tonight?
Motion to accept the bylaws with the changes?
All in favor? Opposed? All right. Moving along. Does anyone have thoughts about the prospective member application package? Here, I'll share with you. That was emailed out a couple of times. It's very similar to what we had before, but of course, it incorporates in the changes that are required by the new law.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
On the, the pages aren't numbered, but the first page following the title page, there are a series of questions where the answers are yes or no. And I just wonder, if the answer to any of those by an applicant is yes, shouldn't there be a requirement for some explanation about what the yes really means? In other words, if you say, have you been convicted of any crime that has not been expelled or otherwise shielded? If you say yes, and then just go into the next question, it begs the question about, well, what were the circumstances? And there may always be mitigation that, you might be relevant to an examination of the consequences of the yes.
So you'd like to add, if yes, please explain?
Absolutely, and there's a whole series of those, beginning halfway down the page.
Yeah, I agree with you.
The first one says, if so, please attach comments.
The first one does, yeah, yes.
Maybe we should put all on the top if yes, rather than attach, just like if yes on any of these questions, please attach explanation or-
Okay, so would we rather say, please attach comments in the body of each question, or just in the top of this section?
I think it should be with each question.
With each question, yeah. Yeah.
Do we have to vote on that? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To add, please explain. Should we say, please explain, or should we stick with this language of, please attach comments?
Please attach comments, because maybe they might have some proof of, like, legal proof or something, depending on their pending or situation.
All right. So the motion is, in the question, the yes or no question section, to add, please attach, if yes, please attach comments to every question. Is that correct? All right, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any other comments on this? I have a typo to correct. On the second to last page, please answer the following questions, your responses to each question. That second line, "using" is spelled "suing," just needs to be changed to "using."
Madam Chair. On the last page of the application, there's an indication that the applicants are supposed to answer the question, what do you believe are the three most critical issues currently facing Anorondal County Public Schools? What specific ideas do you have to address these issues? Is there anything magical about three? I mean, one might argue that there may be more than three critical issues, and why not try to get a more comprehensive reaction from the applicants, based on a more holistic expression of what they think the problems are, if any, in the school system?
I think that was done because they wanted to limit the amount of things they could write, too, so it's shorter, quicker for us, and maybe, out of like the millions, what are the three top ones you will tackle while you're, like, your first, kind of like, saying there are many, but maybe the three most important ones that you think need to be addressed first before the rest get, and they can specify, but I think they did it just for that, to limit the amount of the answers, so it's not too long that we spend too much time reading every single application. But I do agree that we should give them more room if needed, but that is depending on how much we want to give them to write.
I would add that, if there are three, and through our questioning process, we could say, well, you've had three in your application, are there any others that you would see as relevant? All right. That could be one of the questions.
Yeah, we could do that as a follow-up when they're up here being interviewed, yeah. If there's something that, depending on if their answers are very, you know, need more. Yeah, I agree.
Explanation, or, in your case, that you brought up, I think this is a very good aspect of this, and you could say, well, holistically, because it all fits together.
I would just like to add in that I agree with maybe taking away the specific three. We don't want to push them into, they feel very passionate, only want to explain one or two subjects that they're very passionate about in regards to the school system, to force them to pick a third that they may not feel as passionate about. And it may make their packet seem less comprehensive if, all of a sudden, the third issue does not have as much subject matter, when they're writing it down.
A good point, but I also think that perhaps we need to word this differently and say, what do you see as the main issues?
Right.
And this way would allow them some leeway.
I agree.
Is there a motion? And Commissioner Klaus Meyer, would that satisfy your-
You've eliminated the three?
Yes. Would that satisfy your concerns as well?
Are we suggesting that we want them to identify the main issues facing the school system without, whether it's three, or five, or one? Yeah, I would be in favor of that, absolutely.
So let's reword the question, and then vote for that rewording, so then we can put it specifically that way.
Doesn't just removing three get us the same? What do you believe are the most critical issues facing Anorondal County Public Schools? Whether there's one or eight?
The only thing is, if you remove three, then people may feel, they may not know, or other people saying, five, is my packet going to seem paltry if I only do two? Perhaps up to three? So that it would allow people to do one issue or two issues if those are, but it sets some limit so that they're not, right, exactly. Because you're right, that there are so many issues that people may feel really pressured if there's not some limit, or even up to five, if that would be more inconclusive.
I would actually like to see whoever can do three, like really focus on the many issues they believe they are, but there's always the main, which are the main things that feed off of those, so maybe that makes it less repetitive in their writing.
So should we take away three altogether, or say up to three?
I like up to three.
I like up to three.
Is there a motion? Yeah, well, we need a motion.
A change to up to three.
Here we are, okay. Is there a different motion to word it differently?
You know, I think, I think Commissioner was thinking of a holistic way of looking at it. And I think in the verbiage of this, if we said, what do you consider the main issues? Therefore, they could choose two, they could choose five, and it allows them some leeway in that. So, you know, people think three, five, you know, generally, but if you said, main issues, you know, ones that they would focus on, I think you'd get to the same, you'd get to the same point.
I agree with the Commissioner. I think eliminating the three and just, maybe just focusing on main, would be the best approach, and I also don't believe anybody is going to go a lot past five. I couldn't think of anyone submitting that much writing.
Think they'll show something if they do.
Shall we set any word limits or page limits, or just say main issues and allow them to expound? Okay.
I have another. I'd like to see something added. I'd like to see something like, share your perspective on the best practices or programs currently underway in Anorondal County Public Schools, and how you feel these initiatives benefit the students and/or the community.
Is that, let's finish this, let's finish revising this.
That's why I said I had another one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought that that was still a number two. We'll come to that in just a minute. Let's wrap up this number two. Somebody make a motion, please.
I would move to change the wording by eliminating the word "three."
More discussion, more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a little issue, the word "issues" in number two is capitalized, I don't think it should be.
Where is this?
It's, what specific ideas do you have to address these issues? Issues is capitalized. Is that for a specific reason, or just grammatical error?
Looks like just a typo.
Okay.
All right, you had a one to add, let's-
I did. Well, my thing is, is that you're asking about critical issues, which is great, but I'd also like to put something positive in there, because I think there are a lot of positive. So, share your perspective on the best practices or programs currently underway in Anorondal County Public Schools, and how you feel these initiatives benefit the students and/or the community. I think it would show that they've investigated some of the things that are going on, some of the initiatives, some of the changes that have been made, some of the new processes and procedures, and curriculum, and things that are going on in the past four or five years, and let's see what everybody knows, and what they're willing to put out, as far as, you know, something really good.
So would you like to put that in as a fourth? Are you proposing that we put that in as a fourth question?
Yes.
Or instead of one of the questions?
No, as a fourth question.
To put it right after the critical issues, or before?
Either one. Yeah.
I think it's a good culmination.
So-
I agree.
So after number two, we would make that number three, and then move number three to number four?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Under number one, the last question mark, I think should not be a question mark, I think that should be a period. Please include an explanation of the primary strengths you would bring to this position, and what you believe is the proper role of a board member, period, not question mark. Okay. And Commissioner Cantwell, will you send that specific language to Mr. Moser, so he can get it in the packet? Thank you. Any other changes or comments on this application packet?
Are we putting a limit on the, oh, the page two of three, it says, where it says, award and honors? What award honors have you been most proud of to receive? Is there a limit of how many they want to put? Like, I know the first one says in the, does that include everyone in the past 15 years, or is that only for that specific one?
I see. Yeah, the first two say the past 15 years.
Does it, the second one? Because that one doesn't say that, the first one says, "community involvement, please limit to 15 years."
Right.
And then there's one before that.
There's one before that.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Right, no, awards and honors doesn't say that. Are you making a motion to have it, to add that?
I would like to make a motion to add that, so they don't add, like kindergarten, like, you know what I mean, but yeah.
I don't think that should have a limit.
No?
Well, I think if you've got a, maybe you were awarded an athletic award when you were in high school, and that year, that's what you're most proud of. That's what you're most proud of, and it may have been for some of us more than 15 years ago.
Or if you've been like a teacher for 30 years, and in your, like, last recent 30 years, you received an award, and that exceeds the 15 years, I feel like that just gets rid of the point.
Okay, that makes sense, because I was looking at the other ones had a limit, so.
All right, so you're withdrawing your motion. All right. Any other discussion? Commissioner Picard reminded me that we need to decide what our deadline is going to be. Application on the very front page, application must be received by 4:00 PM on XXX, we need to fill in that date. If, I think that we said, and I'm not sure that we're legally bound to do this, but I think we talked at the last meeting about having a 30-day period for the application. Is that correct?
Yes.
When is our meeting for the voting? So I think we-
July 25th.
Yeah, so we did, yeah.
Right, we arranged for that date with this date in mind, so that we could have that period. For people, so what do we want the cutoff date to be? Do we want to have, I think we would probably like to have some time to close the application period, so that we can read them. Does anybody have a thought about that, about what the date should be?
Well, if they get released tomorrow, the 20th, then we can just cut it off on July 20th, so we have five days to look at them.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Can I raise a question about the logistics? Are you going to have them submit 15 copies? Are you going to have them submit one copy? And will the school board duplicate them and distribute them, so that we have time to look at them before the meeting?
Yes, they'll be emailed to us as they arrive, as they are submitted to the school board. The school board will email them to all of the commissioners. Would you like a hard copy?
I'm just thinking about that, in terms of, we don't know how many we're going to get, and the facility of trying to sort through 20 different email submissions that may be including 15 or 20 pages, could be a nightmare, in terms of facility of using it. As opposed to having a binder with all of them in there, that we can all refer to.
Right. Yeah, can we discuss the logistics of that? What, has that been done? Oh, I have a question. Has that been done before? Have they been provided to us in hard copy? In the recent past? Okay.
And then they get posted also on the site, so the public can take a look at them as well.
In the past, I've printed them and brought them, yeah, myself.
I also have a question about logistics. I was reading the minutes, and there's a 10-day waiting period. By the time the interviews are done, all the interviews are done, until the vote's taken? I don't have the schedule in front of me, so I'm speaking from memory. You were just mentioning the July 26th date. If we're still interviewing people, we won't be voting till at least somewhat, we'll be told at least 10 days after that.
Correct, we have a, we have an August meeting scheduled to vote.
So we would have more than five days just to look at the recipe.
After the interviews, yes. Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, but we're looking to, the interviews will take place on the 25th, at that 25th meeting. That's what that meeting is scheduled for, and then the voting will take place the following month.
A meeting we won't need, we will still need the, their-
Especially the five days to conduct meaningful interviews.
No, because we would only have public interviews, meaning that's the only- No, because we would only have public interviews, meaning that's the only day for interviews.
There's, we have two days scheduled for interviews.
For interviews, yeah.
The 25th and 26th scheduled for interviews.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's why he's saying there's more than 10 days. So we have a lot more time to read more, more applications that come in. So if the cutoff date is the 20th, there's still a lot of time between that and when we interview.
When we interview is the 25th.
You mean vote.
Vote.
You mean vote. Yes, yes. We'll still have time to continue reviewing everything from the time we finish the interviews to the time we vote. But the interviewing is that July 25th meeting.
So is the concern then that we don't have enough time to look through all the resumes and applications? Before we start asking questions? Or is the current concern is that we don't have enough time to look at through all the applications and resumes before the vote's date?
Before we start asking questions. I just want to make sure everyone has, feels like they have enough time.
Five days, right?
Yeah, five days. Does that seem excessive?
No. No, I'm telling you to agree that it might not be enough. I've been through this for a few years. Some of those application packets are long.
Okay. They are, I agree. So, is there a motion? Do you want to make the cutoff date a little bit earlier so we have seven days? But that wouldn't get, yeah, that wouldn't give us 30 days.
How would that, yeah, I was gonna say that. How would that get us 30?
I don't know that we have to have 30. I don't know that we voted on it or anything. I think we just said, oh, wouldn't it be nice if, didn't we?
Right.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion just to, because it's a subjective discussion. I don't have a pick the right number, but I would say it would stand based on the applications.
Yeah, the 15th, which is Saturday, so the cutoff would be the 14th really.
I, there could be a way to apply, so.
And I agree with you because I think the quality of our questions will probably be improved if we have an excessive. 10 more, you know, five more days on ambition for the first five. Because going through those, I think the worst thing you can do in an interview is duplicate a lot of what the candidates already said in the package. And that extra five days, I believe, would enhance the quality of our couple of questions we're each allowed to ask.
Might take five days just to read all the answers to the question we just asked.
So it would be Friday the 14th would be the day, like Friday the 14th after, before.
Friday the 14th.
5:00 PM.
4:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I motioned for us to have that as our. I motioned to have July 14th as the day, the cutoff date for applications.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any discussion? Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Alright, so it'll be July 14th at 4:00 PM as the cutoff date. Alright, is there any more discussion or anything else to add, anything else about this application packet?
I think I've asked this before, but do all applicants have to have a background check done too, or is it that's later on?
In the new law, all the applicants have to be searched by Maryland Judiciary Search and Mr. Moser's office, we think, is going to be responsible for that.
So will they do it, when they get the application, then they'll do it and then they'll tell us? So that will weed off some applications if they are, or will we not know until the date of the application, of the interviews?
A small idea.
Yeah. It's not a long delay. Application comes in, search goes out, the application then gets forwarded to you all. I would say within two days of them.
Well, we'll get the applications emailed to us as they arrive, so they won't all come in one big wave on the 14th, so.
And then we don't have to search before they're sent to you.
Correct. Yeah, okay.
As soon as we get them.
So the ones we.
So the ones that we get and we use are the ones that are, have been approved and cleared and we can, okay, perfect.
Madam Chair, I want to clarify, is it gonna be one copy submitted? So there'll be one copy, not two. So there'd be like a control copy that wouldn't go anywhere? And then one that could be circulated or duplicated or whatever?
They're all emailed? Oh, maybe they're not. I think they can be emailed or, are they mostly emailed usually in the past? Yes, yes, they're emailed. So I think one copy via email will, but I think there's not a requirement for two. So if it is mailed, it'll be the one copy. Is that correct?
You know, I was never involved as a staff before with the nominating commission, so I guess I'm asking for your direction. However, you all would like to do, like, go back on.
Well, the application says emailed or mailed.
We can change that to just email, but then if it's mailed, we would have to be scanned that same, that day. It has to have a stamped date. So if it's stamped, the date has to be before, like on the 14th or before. And then you guys will scan them and put them in the packet of emails that are sent to us with all the already reviewed. So it's not like we're getting, gonna get sent 20 emails from them. They're gonna send us one email with all the attachments on them. With all the, with all of the.
No, I would send them, I would send them as they come in.
As they come in after they've been searched?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the ones that come in paper?
I would pull them all and have a big pile and send them.
Oh, so, yeah, just get them, scan them.
As they come in.
Yeah, and just keep the hard copy and bring it, the hard copy to, to our meeting so it's open to people to see and it's not a, it keeps that openness so people can see that it's like, there's a physical copy.
Are we answering your question?
I think.
Yeah.
No, but for more, for people saying, oh, it's been obstructed.
Right. Well, I think we're straying from Commissioner Klasmeier's question.
I'm concerned about security of the submission. Will it be acknowledged when it's received?
Yes.
So that the applicant knows electronically?
At the top of the page, oh, will it be acknowledged electronically? At the top of the page, it says, "If emailed, please call this number to confirm receipt." So, it looks like the burden is on the applicant to confirm receipt, but yes.
And then once they're received, they get posted on the website so that not only we can read them, but the public can read them as well. But if you are the applicant, it's a, you need to PDF your document so that it can't be.
Manipulated.
Manipulated. And you send it as a PDF and then it's, it's not.
And that's why I meant of bringing the physical hard copy one, if there's a paper one, so if anybody says, oh, when you scanned it, you manipulated it or something. I know it's ridiculous, but it's best to have, like, we'll have the physical with the post stamp and everything, so it looks like we received it on this date. And that's why maybe it wasn't submitted because it came before the date line, so.
I guess what I'm concerned about, I just read an article in the paper recently where somebody won a $2.3 million prize in the White Marlin Open in Ocean City. And they manipulated the fishing contest and they had to give the $2.3 million back. So in this day and age of people without scruple, I just, I just think we should do as much as we can to make sure that what is submitted, the integrity of it is maintained.
Do you have a motion to go along with this, that, that they have to be submitted in PDF format or anything, something like that?
As long as it's electronic and it's secure, I can make a copy of what I need to make a copy of. Because when the people are coming in to be interviewed, I think, unless we're all gonna have iPads with everything in it that we're very facile with, I think it'd be a lot easier to have a noted page, a document that you can refer to as you're talking to the person, just to facilitate the discussion. So, no, I'm not, I'm satisfied that I'll be able to get what I gotta get by making a copy of what's submitted.
Alright. Are there any, is there any more discussion about this? We need to approve this whole, with this whole package.
Mrs. Kipki?
Yes.
We can certainly add that phrase about the PDF. Yeah. And I think that's important, that that be added.
Do we have to, do we have to vote? Have to vote, right? Is there a motion?
I motioned that it's worded as a PDF file, emailed to.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, I do think, I agree that that's a good idea. Should we number the pages?
I thought they were numbered in the bottom, so page one of three.
I think that's just in the document. They're not numbered.
I actually have another question. It says, "If emailed, please call this number." Should we say within like a certain time period so that if they call like a week later, they don't have to like search back through all the emails? Like within 24 hours or something? Or is that just not important?
I don't know how.
It'll be posted immediately on the website, so if they don't see it, they can call.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't know. That's an administrative question. Do you happen to know?
Well, first of all, the 5311 is rings on my desk, so that's my phone number.
Okay, so would you like us to have a time period?
And then number two, if I receive any application for anything, it gets acknowledged immediately. Or within, you know, a day.
Okay.
So.
So you don't, it wouldn't make your life easier necessarily if we changed it to put a time period in?
It's fast.
Alright.
I acknowledge. And that way the person feels comfortable. Oh, it's been received, it's on the desk and it'll get to where it needs to go.
Absolutely.
I don't expect big piles of paper getting all lost and, and I will have, Mr. Klasmeier, I'll have a file, a hard file copy in a notebook that doesn't leave my office. And if anyone wants to personally and specially request paper copies, I mean, we can, you know, certainly accommodate.
Thank you.
I have one more question regarding the statement, "If emailed, please call your number to confirm receipt." Is, this indicates that you're only requesting emailers to confirm confirmation. Is there any reason you wouldn't do the same for people?
No, I have to say that this is not, I didn't discuss this with Bob Moser. And he and I could probably have about a 30-minute conversation on this one line.
Well, it just appears that for some reason snail mailers wouldn't be, you know, asked to confirm receipt. Is there, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's a reason we're only asking emailers?
I don't know, that's, we'll have to talk to him about it. It appears to me that this, this to me states that the, the way that they would like to receive the applications is mailed. You know, because it says, "Applications may be mailed to." Now, but if you want to send, if you want to email it. And what I suspect would happen is a lot of these would be hand-delivered, not necessarily mailed. When there've been open seats before, they're hand-delivered. And I get calls from downstairs, "Please sign that you have received this." So maybe that's why he worded it that way.
Historically, I believe people have emailed. Has that been everyone's experience? I mean, I guess we got them emailed from the chair.
Yes, we did.
So, but they, it looked like it had been emailed to him, didn't it? Most of them, yes.
I bet it's easier when it's emailed.
I think most of them were emailed to him.
Because then it's faster to post it, especially if it's a PDF, it's faster to post it on the website.
Absolutely. Scanning it is.
Yeah, and it takes a while and it's more paperwork.
Faster to get the search too.
Aren't we have a friendly school too? You know, environmentally friendly school, it's not.
That's right. There you go.
Photo copying, right? Let's go green.
That's right.
So we should change that to "Applications may be sent to," or "Applications may be."
Delivered to.
Delivered to.
Or.
Because the wording, yeah.
How about "Applications will be accepted?"
May be submitted to.
Submitted or accepted?
Da-da-da, or PDF'd, emailed to, da-da-da. And then remove "if emailed," just put "please call to confirm receipt."
Or it could say, "Applications could be mailed, delivered to, delivered, or if sending by email in a PDF, or a PDF email. The fewer the words, better.
Well, if applications must.
Sorry, go ahead.
Sir, okay. If applications must be received by 4:00 PM, we should say, "Applications may be received at," like just to keep the wording similar, if that works. At the school board, appointment commission, da-da-da. Or emailed.
Or emailed. Is there a motion?
Well, I just wanted to add in, the wordage says, "Applications may either be mailed to in bold." And then at the very end, after the address, it says, "or emailed to." Should the "or emailed" be separated and made bold as well? So that they know that those are the two options? That way the "or emailed" option doesn't get lost.
I see, to make it clearer?
Yes.
I make a motion to have that bolded, "or emailed to."
So, the whole section, "or emailed to," should be bolded? That's your motion, okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have a question. Are they both being bolded or just one?
Oh, it's to match the top one.
Okay, okay, then aye.
I want a motion to remove "if emailed."
Wait, we haven't.
Oh, sorry.
We haven't, we haven't voted on this. We, we're having discussion. Alright, is there any more discussion on that, on bold, we're bolding the words, "or emailed to"? Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Alright.
Okay, I have a motion to remove "if emailed" and put, and just capitalize, "please call to confirm receipt." So that gives option of "if emailed" or "mailed," or so there's no confusion.
I second that.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to ask, can we add "after 24 hours" to, just to give them enough time to post everything? We don't want anybody to immediately call.
Also, they don't start harassing the second day.
Sure. Just so that they give themselves time to look and see if their application is posted already.
Alright, so you'd like to amend the motion to include, to strike "if emailed" and add "after 24 hours" to that sentence?
Correct.
Please call or to confirm.
After 24 hours. Where do you want the "after 24 hours" to go? After the phone number or after the confirm receipt?
I would agree with that at the end.
Grammatically, you have to put it after the phone number because otherwise it's saying, "to confirm receipt." Anyway, they're saying that they received it after 24 hours rather than.
After 24 hours, confirm, yeah. And so just write that, capitalize a P, add the other thing after the phone number.
Okay. Motion is to strike "if emailed" and add "after 24 hours" between the phone number and the end of that sentence. Is there a second?
I second.
You made the motion.
I second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Are we ready to vote on this, or is there any other discussion? They do, they do matter.
I'll make a motion to accept the amended application.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Moving on. Number seven on our agenda is exactly what Ms. Sutherland brought up, which is voting procedures. So, she's right that in the past, this commission has. So, she's right, that, um, in the past, this, this commission has been charged with, only with sending nominations to the governor, and so we could send as many nominations as we wanted, and we didn't have to narrow it down to one, one person. And so our voting has to change, uh, in order to, to get us to one candidate. So, I'll start by saying that we did, um, first I want to say that we did ask the, the attorney general for opinions on, on a number of things, and unfortunately, the attorney general's office got in touch with Mr. Moser today and told him that, um, they are not, that's not the appropriate office to give us the opinion. So we do not have a legal opinion on any of the questions that we asked. Um, so we do have to wait for that, and that is why there are several things on this agenda that we are waiting to discuss, because we don't have a legal opinion. And then so they're working on getting a legal opinion from, from a different source, but for now, uh, we do not have that attorney general's opinion. So for voting procedures, there's a number of ways, there's a number of ways that we could go. Um, the county council obviously has one method of voting, getting, narrowing down a large pool of candidates to one. Um, we can use that method, we can, we can get, you know, from them, the written explanation, um, and a verbal explanation as well of exactly what their procedure is. Um, their procedure, if you haven't watched them, is that they drop off the lowest vote-getters in each round. So what we would do is, we would go down the line, when it comes time to voting, and Commissioner Jones would vote, and, uh, and Commissioner Bennett would vote, and so on, down the line, and you just say your pick for the person, and then whoever didn't get any votes, or whoever got the lowest number of votes would drop out of the pool, and then we'd keep going through rounds. There's another option, we could take, in that initial vote, we could take just the top two vote-getters, or just the top three vote-getters, and then do more rounds of voting with just those people and drop everybody else off. Um, there's a lot of ways to do it, and the other thing that we should discuss is whether we want to do, um, a secret or, or open ballot. So I, I just wanna, I don't, I'm not sure that we'd need to vote on this today, I'm not sure that we need to settle on what we're doing today, because it's a lot to think about, but I definitely want it to be something that we discuss openly before we get to the voting in August, so. Does anybody have thoughts about this? What would be the best way, anybody who possibly has experience in voting in this kind of situation could give us some wisdom?
When the county council uses its method, it's to come up with at least four out of seven votes. But that's not our charge, we have to come up with a supermajority.
We have to come up with eight votes, yeah.
And I don't know if that system would be usable when a supermajority is, uh, is the goal. Five out, or eight, eight out of thirteen votes. Some of the lower vote-getters in the early rounds might have been, some of them that might be more likely to get the eight votes, had they made it farther along in the, in the process. And it might make our job to come to a supermajority even farther if we use that method. Again, I don't have another option, but-
I was hoping you did, I was hoping you weren't gonna follow that with, and here's what we should do.
No.
No.
I wish I could, but I didn't.
Uh, I agree with Commissioner Jones, because I was thinking that if we do the first one you described, it allows us to rethink, um, each applicant as they drop out slowly and slowly.
I guess the top three or top five method would have the same problems. Is there another body similar to ours that we could look at that does voting like this? Uh, the county council was my thought, because the county council is in our county, but you're right about the number of votes, the percentage.
Having been involved in interest-based problem-solving and interest-based negotiation strategies, we had an exercise where we used dots. Feel funny bringing that up in a formal area. If we have nine candidates, everybody gets nine dots. And we put them on our favorite, it's, it's a way to vote, it's just a way to graphically show who you're voting for. And then, uh, it's a way to assess by a group who is the most favored by the people casting the votes. We didn't do it with people, we did it with negotiations and resolution options.
That is something, uh, so you would have the names, wait, each, if there were nine candidates, each of us would have nine dots?
Yeah. And there'd be nine candidates on a board, and we'd go take turns putting how many of our dots we wanted to put on the individual names.
I see, so if we really liked one candidate, we'd put all our dots on that and sort of, hmm. Well, there's no legal charge for how we, how we vote, so it's up to us to set, to set the voting, so that's... Now, would that bring us... We'd still have to have one round of voting once we got, that would pick our top candidates, right? And then we'd still have to have a round of voting, because we do have to get to eight, and we wouldn't know. Okay. But that would be a way to narrow the field, rather, yeah, that's-
Didn't we talk about like a checklist in some way, like things we narrowed down, and then kind of do the voting like that, like everybody... Like, um, a score sheet kind of thing, that we can give each points, like, out of ten or something, and then we add them up, and then... So there's a clear of why I didn't vote for this or that, but then it's also having to create one, and that takes too long, but I don't know.
Well, I think, I think combining, uh, Commissioner Jones's idea with the county council voting, as you're scoring your, let's say there's ten applicants, and I'm reading through, and I'm gonna put my favorites at the top, I'm gonna, as I'm reading, and then, once we interview candidates, I'm gonna possibly reorder them as I've, you know, are they as great on paper as they are in person, kind of thing? So then I would have my top three, and I could use my nine dots, or ten dots, or whatever it is, um, accordingly, and then we narrow it down that way. But if we're all over the map, we're still all over the map. If thirteen of us, like, each one of us likes, has the top three candidates that are all different, we're still gonna be, end up like the county council with a lot of voting.
But we're more likely to get to a, a few top candidates this way.
But if we're, if at the beginning rounds, we're voting just to narrow down the list, like, if, if we all, it's hard to, it's, it's somewhat abstract until we're, it's hard to see right now, for me, um, how it would play out.
When we did, when we did Teacher of the Year, um, you would get a scoring sheet that, you know, um, it might be, you know, ten points per question, or whatever. And then what happens is, the, the ones that, you know, like if, if you can rank them one to ten, and there's ten questions on it, you know, how did they present themselves, what new ideas did they share, you know, whatever you want to call it. But then, those that were in the top half, so if everybody's vote on every candidate gets counted, and if you can do one to ten, like, let's say there's ten questions, a hundred points altogether, and your candidate did ninety, and, um, you know, each of the commissioners, ninety, 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 but then somebody else was eighty-five, you add them all up, and then the bottom ones drop off, but everybody's vote counts, because you get a scoring system on it.
And that's the visibility that everybody's asking for, because it'll give them a straight shot of why this person scored low, because everybody gave them this scoring on these specific things we're looking for. But that's the thing, is narrowing down those questions can be where we get.
But my, my candidate that gets a ninety-five, that same candidate might get a fifty-five from someone else who has a different perspective. So, when we did Teacher of the Year this year, we did score the applications, but we didn't actually, so when we went into the room, we were, we were doing the last ten, you're, you, we all presented our top three. And then we figured out with dots, we figured out who's, who, who, where everybody's top three, and they tended to, they tended to be all the same people, for the most part, in about five. Does that make sense?
Right, and then-
But we didn't actually use the score, I didn't say, "Oh, well, I only gave that person a fifty-two," you know, we didn't actually use, we used the score ourselves, but we didn't put, use the score.
So, I guess, my question, and we have commissioners who've served before, um, are, you know, I would imagine that the top candidates are the top candidates. Was it a big difference in who folks actually liked, I mean, from the commission and thought would represent well? Were they, were they, was it really all over the map? Wow, okay.
Well, one thing Krasz tries to do with finding, um, our nominations for our, our senior members of the board, is we have the scoring systems, and have like different criteria, so that we can see exactly why this person voted this way, because we're trying to stay transparent, and rather than having bias, we can explain why we voted this way, rather than this one. And that's how we choose our top three. The lowest scoring ones don't make it to the next round.
Well, I, I would like to see if the county council has their procedure in writing, I would like to look at that. And then, um, go from there. I don't want to recreate the wheel, that makes me nervous. Because this, I mean, we have to appoint, this is important, you know, and this, this procedure will probably follow for any other appointments between now and 2020, so it behooves us to get the process right. I would, I would feel more comfortable coming, using a process that has been used in another public body.
And that we know is working, if you can-
Rather than crafting something ourselves. I don't know.
You'd have to have a consistent criteria, because if you didn't have that, um, then you, you could get into some major issues, okay? I think the other thing is, uh, that you need to be aware of, granted, personnel, they're not hired, but there are certain liability issues if you discuss personalities, et cetera, uh, in a public, um, situation. My background's Director of Personnel and Staff Development for a school system, and, um, you know, we had executive sessions to talk about personnel. So, and, and I think that last, our last commission, we voted, alright, again, it was a recommendation to the governor, but when public comment came out, no one commented, because there is a liability issue, just want you to be aware.
So, in reference to the voting, you're saying having a, a score sheet or something similar to that is, is, okay, probably out for us?
You have, you have to have some consistency.
Okay. So, um, what about the dots idea? Is that, this, do you have the same objections to that, or do you think that would work? Does it sound, at least for the first, so I, so for the first, the initial winnowing of candidates to get to that top three or top five, or whatever? Would that-
I'm sorry, um, why is the, uh, counting system out? I didn't understand that.
The counting?
Not the counting, the point system, yes. Why was that out?
You mean the, where we just vote and drop the bottom three, or keep the top three, or which?
Whatever the most recent commissioner asked.
Oh, Commissioner Farah.
Yes.
You just want her to explain again?
Yes, why, why did you think it was a liability?
We voted, alright, in public session. However, we did have an executive session to discuss some of the candidates, which we did not, obviously, in an open session, because there's some certain liability issues, alright? But we did vote. You remember that, don't you, Bill? Okay, and, um, so, you know, that's, that's just the reality of, of personnel. Uh, but, these are not paid, well, they are paid.
But not by us.
But not by us.
And they don't answer to us.
Right, and they don't answer to us, so.
So are you almost saying, like, all we have to do is vote, we don't, or not vote, but we just have to have our, we don't have to explain our criteria, or why we voted this way?
No, I think, I think we have to have consistent criteria to, to, uh, to vote. I mean, another way might be initially through the applications, is score each question. Say it's five, alright, for each question, or ten. And therefore you'd have a total score, and you can see which candidates were strong. But then after the interviews, again, consistency in questions, uh, if you don't have that consistency, you, you run into some issues.
And we don't ask the same questions to every applicant, that is true.
That's right.
Right.
So.
So we would have to, if we were going to use this?
You would have to have some consistency with that.
Yep.
Um, and I think that could be, again, another issue.
Okay. Please do.
The, uh, the nominating commission before this past year and a half or so, when things kind of changed, we did our voting in executive, in executive session. And our job was to give at least two people, two nominees, for each vacancy, off to the governor. And we'd sit in a, in the caucus room, and we'd go around the table and do a preliminary vote. Now, it required eight votes out of eleven. So, people started falling off pretty quickly, if one candidate only got two votes, well, they're still six away. So, we would do another round of vote, and, and they weren't actually knocked off, they weren't actually voted off the island, but the commissioners at the table realized that it's very, very unlikely to get six more votes to somebody who, who only got one or two in the first round. So it was a, a natural tendency for commissioners to vote for the people who were most likely to actually hit the eight-vote mark. And that's when the conversations were going on, well, you know, five people, six people voted for this candidate, ask some of the naysayers, what made you not vote for them, what makes, why not them? And the conversations went back and forth, until we finally came to an agreement on the two people for each vacancy. It wasn't, uh, wasn't by formula, it came about by discussions and going around the table as many times as we needed to, to get the number of candidates we needed.
But could you have gotten to one by that method?
Well, I don't know the answer to that, we've never been in a position to have to. I understand that's gonna be a, a little different of a task. But we can get it narrowed down, even if we got it narrowed down to the last two, we can find a way to separate, I think.
So you're in favor of just voting, and continuing to vote until we get there?
Well, it, yeah, it's, that's an oversimplified way to state it, because there are discussions that go on between the voting around the table, and each round of voting, and each, each round of voting was recorded by the chair, until we got the one that was usable, as far as sending our nominees to the governor.
And was that deliberation and back and forth, or, or I should say, the questions to the, the naysayers, was that, uh, deliberated in public?
No. It was done in the caucus room, what was done in public, we came from the caucus room out to here, and we announced the votes, only the votes. And, uh, not the discussion, not the discussions of the hows and whys, but that each candidate got told what their vote count was, and then at the end of it, we came down to what, what the winners' votes were, what the, what the nominees' votes were.
Well, we're not yet sure what the legality of that, or what, what the decision will be-
Executive sessions, right, I understand that.
Right, right, so, we have to, and especially, I don't think we even asked, I don't think we ever talked about voting in closed sessions, I don't even know that we asked that question, so I may need to, um, add that to the list of questions to ask.
Uh, I have, I have a question regards to using a, a pointing or scoring system, as they were discussing. Is there a way to kind of, and I know this would be maybe a bit of a hassle, but the questions that we ask on the application, is there a way to kind of separate them into categories? Um, with obviously maybe some categories, um, allowing for more points than others, and, and doing the point or scoring system that way?
Well, actually, what Krasz does is, we, um, everybody asks their own question, because every, we have a, we have a group of people that, um, read the applications, everything, and they have their own concise questions that they're asking, and everybody scores them on how articulate, or how well they articulate their answer, on how concise it is, and their knowledge and experience- on how concise it is, and their knowledge and experience and stuff with that, with that category. So that's how we vaguely just grade them.
But there, there are categories?
Yes.
And are all the categories equal, or do some have a bit more weight than others, I guess?
Um, I'm pretty sure they're all equal.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't it make sense to have an evaluation sheet that each of the commissioners would use as the applicants are coming in and making their presentations? So that, I think we owe a certain amount of consistency to the applicants so that whatever criteria we adopt, we're all applying it subjectively admittedly, but at least there's structure to how we're evaluating the responses. And at the end of that, you'd have something that could be scored, and then you'd aggregate it, and you know, you'd, you'd have some basis for ranking number one, number two, number three, number four. I don't know how else you'd do it, given, one of the things you're gonna have to deal with also is the fact that you have so many commissioners, and you just hope and pray to the good Lord that everybody shows up on both nights, or if, if we need both nights. Because if you have a situation where some people are absent, and therefore the applicants aren't being consistently evaluated in terms of the, the full body, that can be problematic too. So anything we can do to provide structure is gonna make it easier for us to do it.
I think the scoring idea creates a, a lot of work for someone to make sure that the evaluation sheets are consistent, even that maybe the questions are consistent. I think it's a, it's a hu- huge additional amount of work, and not necessarily maybe worth the payoff, in terms, just in terms of how we're getting to where we're going. So you're saying on these evaluation sheets, we would take, that everybody would take their top scores, and how, how?
No, you'd have, for example, seven criteria.
Right.
The applicant's understanding of the problems of the school board. Uh, the, uh, wh- whatever we come up with, they would be discrete criteria that would be applied by each of us as we go through the interviews. And then you'd, you'd have numerical factors associated with each of the, um, evaluation factors. And then at the end of it, you'd have some basis for saying, all of us, when we aggregate our scores, ranked Joe Jones or Mary Smith number one, number two. Then we'd have some, some empirical basis for making the decision.
So, so are you, are you advocating that as our only way of voting, or that's how we get our top candidates?
That's how we would get our top candidates.
Okay.
I, I would agree.
Alright, discussion?
An effective method to allow, to drop off the, the lower candidates and get through rounds.
Well, I, I, as we're sitting here, we have an application that we just approved, um, and then we know we're going to interview every candidate. But we could consider a rubric that we as commissioners use, and you could, I just wrote down quickly, you could score their application. That could be one, let's say the application was one out of thirty points. Their resume, they're submitting their resume, that could be, um, no. Forget the math, but their application, their resume, and their interview, if that all equaled up to a hundred, and we personally use that to bring our people to the top. But it's still, my ninety-five on applicant seven might be Mr. Jones's fifty-five on applicant seven. I mean, it's still gonna be.
But Commissioner Krasnyer's point was that, that the top total, so you add up everybody who voted for, for candidate seven, you add up, yeah.
And with thirteen.
All of that, and then you drop everybody.
Thirteen scores.
Well, I would, then I would, if, if that's, if people are, if the commission is leaning towards doing something like that, then I would create a, a separate, I would advocate to create a separate rubric that looks at their application, their resume, and their interview. And we make, that's three sections of the process, and we attach a score that equals up to a hundred, and then.
The problem is that if we do that, it's kinda like the science fair, you know how they do it? They have that little thing for the kids, like, if you cover page, ten points, da-da-da, twenty points. So because it's so transparent and perfect like that, do we have to attach it to the application itself so they know that, oh, I submitted, like, kinda like their own checklist?
We would use it as commissioners.
As commissioners, so it's more of a personal.
To get to our top vote.
Yeah.
More of a rating system.
More of a rating for ourselves.
Yeah, that would bring transparency if anybody asked, too.
But there's thirteen of us, so.
Yeah.
Each, we're gonna.
I li, I, I like the idea. I wonder how colleges do it when they get applications like that.
That's similar to what they did, but we're, but if we created a separate document very quick here, we're not opening an app, we just approved an application, so. And that has a lot of parts to it, so if we just said the applicant, the questions on the application, their resume, and then, and you, you know, the resume as it relates to school board service. But again.
I think you've, you've accomplished what you desired and gotten discussion out of it, at the very least.
Yes, there are certainly ideas that, I was, I was, I was hoping that there would be ideas I hadn't thought of. Um, so it sounds like folks are leaning toward this. So, so the only things on this rubric, so we would just, everybody would assign a score to application, resume, and interview, rather than doing categories?
Do we like their shoes? I don't think that's necessary, but, you know.
You could also throw in other, that's the famous other.
Well, also, we should put the other, which would be for, if you are removed from the vote because of personal. Like, we were talking about, we know the person, you know.
With the, you score.
No, no, but it would be written as a, that's why this person did not vote. It's on record that this person knows this person.
In, in that case, would we, should we maybe do it, instead of just adding all the scores and getting raw score, doing an average?
Or we could find the percentage?
Yeah, but that, we will come to that if we do. I doubt we all gonna know every single person that walked in, and have like a personal relationship with every single person that's walked in.
So that brings us, so if we do it that way, that will bring us the top, however many we choose.
And then we can do the point system.
And then, and then we'll vote, is that?
Yeah.
Correct. All of the methods that we've talked about so far are just methods to get us to those top three that, or four, or five, or whatever that we still have to vote on. So we still have to decide how we're gonna do it. Are we just, we're gonna go down the line and everybody's gonna say the name? And if we're not at eight, we keep doing it until we get to eight.
At least we'll have less people than, yeah, and discussion between.
How are we gonna choose the top percentage? Are we gonna find the average of all the scores, and everybody that got above the average score? Are we gonna take them, or what? What do you propose?
Top three.
Top three, okay.
Yeah, but at least the worksheet will give us a head start.
Yeah.
We have to vote on every one of them.
I didn't hear what it was.
We have to vote for every single candidate.
We voted on every candidate. But.
Yeah, at least at the, at least at the first round.
But the goal was different.
The goal, yeah.
So, oh, okay, so you're saying, so, right, so I'm picturing, we go down the line, and Commissioner Jones says, I vote for candidate seven, and then Commissioner Bennett says, I vote for candidate six, or whatever, and we just go down the line, and everybody says the top vote because we are only trying to vote one person. But you're saying we need to go through every candidate and go to every person and say yea or nay at least once. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Based on the score sheet that we.
Well, no, based on, they exist, and we have to vote on them. Okay, alright. So I'm glad you're saying this because. That's in our bylaws?
It's eight votes that we have to have.
Yes.
You have to vote on every one of them.
Is it in the bylaws that we have to vote on every one of them? I, there's no.
That seems to take away from the purpose of the whole.
Of the whole scoring, yeah.
We have, we have, we have to.
And we have asked for a legal opinion.
It's an open meeting.
Right, but we have asked for a legal opinion about whether we are, we have any guidelines about voting legally. So we'll find that out, so that may, right, but, uh.
So if we, if we're going to use the county council method with the idea that we ha, every single applicant will have a public vote, then the rubric idea, or the evaluation idea, is just for our own personal, is just for us to sort out our own applications. It's not really, so I personally can sort out the applications without a rubric.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can personally do that too.
Right.
I'll pick my top one, and after they've been interviewed, and I don't necessarily need a rubric.
Right.
Well, we're doing the rubric more for like transparency, as we were talking about.
Well, the only, about, sorry, go ahead.
I don't, I personally don't need the rubric too. I would just read them, put my top, and put it on top.
The value of the rubric was when we were discussing, and I don't know, Commissioner Farrar may be correct that we, that we do have to do it the way that she said, in which case, yeah, this is a whole different discussion. If the voting goes, everybody just says the name of their top candidate, and you keep doing that till you get there, that's one thing, and we use the rubric, and that gets us to our top three. If the voting goes that we have to name each candidate, and everyone has to vote on each candidate, that's a different thing. I know in the past that is how we've done it, but the goal of that voting was different because we could send essentially as many names as we wanted to the governor, and in this case, we just have to pick one, so I, we need to decide. Do we need, we need to have a legal opinion, but we also need to decide what, what we're going to do. Are we, do we need to vote on every candidate? And I don't know that we can decide this tonight because we don't have the legal opinion.
If we vote on every candidate, then the first round of voting, wherever we go through candidates one through ten, Commissioner Pickard is only going to vote in that first round for her first pick.
Right.
So if my first pick doesn't make it, if I'm the only one in the first round that likes the, my candidate, and they get eliminated, then I have the option in the next round of voting to vote for my second choice, or however. But because I didn't vote for that person originally, but if I'm the only one that likes a certain candidate, then I have to rethink because I need seven other people to vote the way I vote.
Our bylaws only say for voting rights, each commissioner shall have one vote upon each matter submitted to a vote by his commission, by this commission. The vote shall be exercised in person and not by proxy. All matters to be voted upon shall require eight votes for passing. That's it, that's all it says in voting rights, so.
So do we need to table this?
I think so.
Legal opinion?
Yeah, and once we figure that, then we can.
For a legal opinion, and for everyone to let all these ideals, ideas settle and think about what would work. But yes, if the legal opinion is that we are not bound by any restrictions, and we can choose our method of voting to be however we want it, then we're right back where we are right now. So, is there a motion to table this? Second? Uh, a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other business?
Well, the, we'll, we'll get the county council process. We'll see if it's in writing, and we'll distribute it, and see if we can't make some headway.
So will we be, will we be voting the way we are going to vote next meeting, before the interviews?
I'd like to, I'd like to know how we're going to vote going into it, don't you agree?
It should be the first item after the play of allegiance on our agenda.
I, I think so. I think it would be fair to the candidates, don't you think? To know how the vote's gonna go?
Yeah.
No, 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 that's true. But I just mean, we can, just so that they know going into their interviews, and I don't know if it'll affect their interviews or anything.
Madam Chair, before we get off of voting completely.
Yes.
I wanna make one very short suggestion. I looked at the minutes and saw that there is a ten-day waiting period between the candidates' uh, interviews and the voting.
Yes.
Uh, our prior commission, going back all the way to two thousand and seven, made decisions like this, and they were never recorded effectively. If we're gonna put together voting procedures and we wanna record that ten-day waiting period, maybe we oughta find a place to put it, if not in our bylaws, then in the voting procedures so it's memorialized for future commissioners.
Thank you. Um, any other, other business? Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.